To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make approval for the agenda, consent agenda.
It's not consent, it's just the agenda.
Oh, sorry. I'll approve all the agenda.
I would like to add to the agenda of where the council come up with the volunteer policy. So when volunteers come in, we have a set policy in place.
Where would you like to put that?
Uh, new business?
Uh, C?
Yes.
A volunteer policy?
Yeah.
I'll support that change. Any discussion?
Can I interject? Do we need to add Bob to the agenda?
I'll sort of cover through the finance personnel. The new business items, C, a volunteer policy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. Okay, uh, the approval of the agenda, can we take care of that? Well, no, he put C in there, the volunteer, who just did that, but we didn't approve.
I approved the agenda and Brian supported it.
With the change? With the change. Okay, then our vote is good. Okay. Public comment on the agenda items.
Um, I'm looking at discrepancy on the agenda he handed out tonight compared to the one that I got in the email. For some reason, I'm not on the one that's back here.
Point taken.
It was voted on to be removed just now, I'm just asking.
Would you like to state your name?
My name is Michael Wilson. And I put in the proper paperwork I needed to Dawn to be able to be put on the agenda for new business. And now I'm not on there even though the original one I am on went to all the council members.
It got reapproved.
How do you get reapproved?
Because the mayor sets the agenda with the manager and I didn't approve of it.
Even though it was already emailed out to all the council members?
It doesn't make a difference, Mr. Wilson.
It doesn't make a difference. Okay, I'll just talk at the end then, no problem.
Uh, Mr. Duranjack?
Thank you. My name is Mike Duranjack, Bay County Commissioner. Uh, I was asked to, uh, be part of the interview process for Mr. Moffett. And I have to tell you that I've interviewed my share of city managers while I was here and at the county and everything else. This is a guy, don't let him get away. All right. Very well qualified. Well, I bobsled a few things that were pretty new off of him. He already had paperwork sitting down at his desk. So I mean, this is the guy for Pin County. He needs, and council, you need, I'm telling you right now, you need to get on this treasurer clerk job as soon as you can. You've got an election coming up in March and this is a whole new thing for the county and the state of Michigan with proposal three. I can't overemphasize this. People are going to be able to come in and say, I want to vote, boom. There's no more, you used to have to go down to register. No, it's going to be instantaneous registration. The county, we approved last week twenty-six new laptops. Every precinct will have an additional laptop to use. But the county, the clerk's office, we do not have extra personnel to be sending all over. So you may have to, if you're hurting or whatever, you may have to pull in from the township or something like that. And, uh, as always, if the interim city manager, Bob, needs some help or whatever with grants on housings and things like this, we don't have an extensive staff, but we have a few more people down there to do that than what the city does. And I'd be more than welcome to work with Bob on that.
You look forward to working with him?
Thank you.
Thank you. If the folks standing would like to come and sit down, there's plenty of seats, I would appreciate that.
I'm good.
Please sit down or remove yourself from the chambers. There's plenty of seats for everybody. I repeat, being disruptive or what? Why won't you sit?
If my back and neck bothers me, it's hurting me to sit down, okay?
You have a doctor's excuse?
Do I need one for you? I mean, I'm not doing it, I'm going to get the engine.
All right, in, uh, correspondence, we have, uh, Mr. Patrick Johnson. Are you present?
Present.
You would, uh, stand by the desk there. I have a table set up front here for people to use.
Sure, no problem. My name is Patrick Johnson. Uh, I just wrote a letter to the council members just to express my interest in the future. I'm starting to involve myself in the process. I've invested interest in Pin County. My wife and my five boys live here. And my four boys are in Pin County High School. They love Pin County as much as I do. So I just wanted to involve myself in hearings and, you know, in the future, keep my eyes and ears open. If I'm looking at someone that can be valuable to the city, then, um, you know, maybe I'll be able to jump on a position. But I just wanted to introduce myself and, you know, I know some of you and get to know you and help Pin County move forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coming up a little bit later, there is some positions on some of our boards that we're looking for people, so. Next, we have the Goodfellow fundraising. Anybody present for Goodfellas?
That's what we just did, that's what we had Johnson's one.
Okay, we have, uh, no presentations on the agenda. Approval of the consent agenda.
So, and you're on the desk, it should have been waiting for you with the amount of the bills for this month. It's seventy thousand, four hundred and one dollars and eighty-three cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll support.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda and second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. Committee reports. City managers.
So, do you have my rent report in front of you? As you may or may not know, um, Bob has been meeting with me over the last couple of days. We've been together. Today, we met with Gleason Vanderbrink, um, who was heading up the SAW grant. That will be completed at the end of this month. So, uh, George brought in an issue today that the ballast are, for the output are, uh, running out. So we have to look at replacing the ballast in the treatment tanks. And they're about seventy-five dollars a piece, and I believe he said there's twenty-six of them.
Don, has that covered in honor of current budget, any mainest items?
Yes.
Are we looking for approval to do that or?
I don't believe it'll be an amount that will need approval, but, well, yeah, we would, twenty-six.
What was the trigger again?
Seventy-five dollars.
And this receipt that was for?
So, when the, um, after the wastewater goes through the two ditches and clarifiers, it goes to a final clarifier. And then from there, it goes into a light filtration system that kills the bugs and everything before we can put that back into the river. And it's that, that light filtration that those ballasts are going.
I'll make a motion to allow city manager to purchase those.
I'll support.
Items.
I'll support.
We have a motion to replace twenty-six ballasts, is that what you call them?
Yes.
For the sewer plant? Then second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
City services, chairperson, support?
I have nothing to report.
Finance personnel, chairperson, Saha?
Uh, yes, we had two meetings since our last, uh, council meeting. The minutes from the prior two meetings are in your late packet here. Day eleven twenty-six, November twenty, November twenty-six, and then we met again, uh, on this past week and, uh, actually, uh, the main discussion was to plan out how to staff the urban management positions within the city. The clerk treasurer, first, the city manager. The discussion with the committee was to set priority for the city manager, you know, and bring in that key person first. And then to work with that person to recruit a management team, meeting the clerk and the treasurer, you know, based on the desires of the city manager with that city manager's input, um, to create a cohesive team. So, that being said, um, we accumulated resumes after applications that came through to date. In the meantime, we did contact the MML, Michigan Municipal Link, as far as contacts for interim manager candidates. They have a selection of screened can, people that are highly qualified that, uh, that, uh, perform interim management duties. A link is generated, which is on the side of the MML through the Michigan Municipal Executive, um, link. And, uh, I sent out contacts of those in the list. And, uh, Mr. Moffett was one that responded back. Since that point in time, which has been probably two weeks at this point, we've had contact with him back and forth. Mr. Moffett met with our finance and personnel committee last week in our search committee. Persons Carmichael was there and Mike Forensic was also sent in on the, uh, on this meeting. Had a very thorough interview, which lasted probably about an hour or so plus. Credentially, Mr. Moffett, uh, has a lot of, a lot of experience in city management. Last positions were in the city of Gladwin. And, uh, extensive experience between those jobs and, and a professional career in city management through a few years. So with that, I'd just like to open that up to, uh, allow Mr. Moffett to make any presentation if you desire to the council and to. Go through any questions and answers that the council may have to address, Mr. Moffett. Okay, I'll be brief. Okay, that's one of the things you learn about me. We have meetings to take care of business, but we're going to be as brief as we can. And I must say, it's Christmas, right? And we can all look back to the last five years and we can all stay angry. Or we can make up our mind that we're going to decide to start over and we're going to forgive. And we're going to make the most of what we have, which means I in particular have to roll up my sleeves and work real hard. That means I need you people to come to me with legitimate concerns and be nice about it. I've already been addressed to the board and things that we need to work on to make this better for everybody. And I've been spending a lot of time with Dawn talking about how we need to work together to make things better for the employees. I think with some support and some understanding and some mutual respect, we could do some good here in this community. And I know and I believe in my heart that we do need a good solid treasurer in here. But I also believe we've got some great people in this room. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't want anybody else to leave. I don't want anybody to leave tonight mad. Christmas is here and we need to remember what that's about, okay? I've agreed to come. We have a six-month contract on the table for them to vote on tonight. I have a master's degree. I was an army cop. I worked in a hospital for fifteen years and I have almost twenty years been a city manager. I've been on the MME board, which is the branch or the arm of MML for the managers. And before they put me into this pool, they did a thorough background check. Criminal, credit, traffic, and ten of my peers in the ethics committee at MME reviewed that before I was allowed in here. And the reason they do that is they don't want to endorse somebody unless they're endorsed a good person. And when communities need somebody to come in and try and help right away, we're ready to go. Kind of got a stamp of approval from the state saying, we vetted these guys and they wouldn't be in here if they weren't. When I retired, Luddington called and I said, no, I need a break. And it was three hours from home. This is forty-five minutes away and there's a lot of good people here. I'm an OSGO to graduate and I'm a Saginaw Valley grad. I have my national certification in public manager. In eighteen years, I know, and you're not going to throw, I'm not going to see much here that I haven't already seen. I just did a water tower to finish an iron removal plant. My average income for grant money was eight hundred thousand in thirteen years I was there. Was I popular with everybody? No. I had big hard decisions. And I'm here tonight saying, I have to lead you guys through some changes to make things better. But it is the right thing to do. And I have committed that I will not leave until things are better and I will not leave until all three of those pieces are here. But if things can go well for us for the next six months, I'm looking to stay for a while and help you build this community. You have so much potential. You have the twenty-three corridor here. You have the whole northeast Michigan, Bay County, who looks to this area to repatriate, right? So we have things we need to tend to in the office right away. We all can do better about how we act and how we treat each other. But I think tonight bringing me on board is the right thing to do and I will put everything behind it that I can. And I will be honest with those people and I'll be honest with these people and I will be honest with you, okay? We don't have a lot of money. We don't have a lot of people. There are a lot of things we'd like to do and can't afford right now. The city is like a big ship, right? And we are little rudders trying to, in particular, it would be me, trying to move this city to a better direction and reset the compass. There's grant funding in April and I'd love nothing more to ask the USD to help us pay this park lot, put a couple of drains out here, right? Don't we want to see, right? We want things to get better. We got things that need to be done and we don't have money, so we don't have it all figured out. But we need to do a better job here and serve you and you. And if I'm brought on board, those would be priorities. Let me not say clerk and treasurer is important and we're already working on it. And we've got some friends in Stanish and other communities that have gone way out on limb to say they help us through these changes that we need to make. And it's about making ourselves healthy and making ourselves better and serving the community the way that it needs to be served. So there are lots of things on my mind and lots of things that I've shared with some of these people over the last couple of weeks. I'm here to say I'd like to help you and I hope these folks will put me in a position to do that. Thanks.
So with that, um, any questions? Dawn, any questions?
You're fine. I think we're good, aren't we?
We're really good.
I just like, go ahead.
Are you still looking for a place? Because you have audience here.
Oh, yeah. I, I do have a little dog, rescue dog. He's about seventy-five, which makes him about eleven. And it kind of breaks my heart because right now I'm going to have to leave him with some friends and not see him for a while. But the hopes were that I would have somewhere here that I could stay at least two or three nights a week. It's forty-five miles home, right? Till we get things figured out. I'm not, I'm not willing to sell the lake house to come. But I'm willing to come till we get things fixed. And I'm willing to stay until everybody's comfortable. And I don't know, if you make me too comfortable, you might have a hard time chasing me out. And it really is a nice town. Um, but I, I did ask to be here. I know they've got some things to talk about as far as, as bringing me on. But I think we've put it in a position that I'll come on and work with Dawn for about four weeks. And then I'll take the lead and would hope again to keep everybody kind of in the boat and we just kind of make things better one day at a time. That is my goal, just a lot of time and we all have to work together. There are things that council knows that needs to be done. You know, I sat through the dangerous building ordinance meeting last week and we had a couple of fellows. I think one of them's here who's got a fallen down shed and somebody else had a building getting ready to collapse. We need to tend to those issues too. And as soon as we get city hall operating, that I'll be out there. But I also know if we work together, we can have funding in place for twelve months, federal grants for demolition through our housing commission that would allow us to move those projects forward faster in about twelve months. These are all things that I want to get going to help us. We need a handbook, so that's coming too.
I just personally would like to thank Bob for applying for the position. You know, I am a newly appointed mayor. We have had our ups and downs within the last year, but it is Christmas time. And this council is trying to do what's best for this city. Whether you see it that way or not, I don't know. But we try to do what's best. And I seen, uh, Mr. Moffett's, uh, resume. Very, very impressive, you know? Being a manager for eighteen years. Worked through, uh, with other communities. I, I did my own background check. I've talked with four different city managers. I'll let you know, city of Auburn, city of Essexville, Gladwin, city of Stanis. And I think all except Essexville, because they probably didn't know Mr. Moffett, all talked very, very highly of him. And the manager of Gladwin, uh, Chris Shannon, I believe.
Chris Shannon.
His words to me was, you know, I didn't personally get to work with Mr. Moffett because he went out and I came in. But he did say, he left the city in pretty good financial shape. So, it just tells you the dedication that Mr. Moffett has. Trying to move our city forward and in a positive way. And I'm happy. I hope we vote him in tonight. And he can become, when Dawn wants to step down, whatever timeframe, that he can step in as the interim and get us moving in the right direction. So, as the mayor.
Excuse me for one second. I'm not leaving angry, but my wife is in distress, okay?
Well, please, it's okay.
I'll fight from what I can hear.
Thank you.
So as I stated earlier, it is Christmas time. We've made some mistakes all around. This council, the administration. We can only try to move forward and move positive and put the past behind us. And let's move forward as the city of Pin County. And go in the direction that we need to go with the help of our residents. We cannot do it all alone by ourselves. We need the residents. We need your input. Don't be afraid to come and ask questions and give us your input. I'll just let you know, I got a phone call today. I believe in April, we have the twenty-twenty census coming up. I didn't respond to phone call yet, but I will, or Bob will, whatever. They're asking for our input on what our city needs for the census. So they can get it out and ask the right questions to help us move forward. So with that, we'll continue. Any other questions, the council, Bob?
Yeah, I would like to ask them, what other state certifications do you have that's not listed on?
That, that might take a little while. The CPM is not a state. That's a national certification. That's a certified public manager. That one is listed. Um, but I'm very qualified to read blueprints, so I can keep up with an engineer and I could do a lot of that review. And when you talk about engineer time, we need them, but if I can keep it to a minimum, we can. I am very versed in paving streets. I don't need an engineer unless we're setting new drains or we're setting new curbs. I could do all the bidding and I could be the contract foreman and I could oversee that work. And I've done that in Gladwin. If you go look at the roads, they're way better than they were. And I know that's one of the areas we need help. Sidewalks as well, I'm familiar with that. With eighteen years in city manager, of course, being the chair of the red team, which is our fourteen county EDC, I certainly have always had an interest in economic development, moving communities forward. In the interview last week, I said part of my favorite thing about chairing a fourteen county EDC, I was always excited to share what we were doing because we were always busy. But I was always looking for that one community that was doing something different or doing something new. And if it didn't cost a lot of money, three of us could do it, I'd go back and try. So those are the kinds of things that I would like to do here. Our money is going to be a real challenge and I really don't have my arms around it yet. We are meeting with the auditors in the morning and we do know we need a meeting before month end. So we're going to try real hard to do something before the thirtieth and the schedule be closed. But I will get a meeting tomorrow and any of the things that we could do for housekeeping before that's done, we need to do that. I know you've had treasury working with you on some issues over the last couple of years and we don't want that to get worse. But that work with treasury becomes a burden and a time suck on the office. So, um, I will do what I can as Dawn continues to wrap some things up and help with other projects. I will be diving into that audit this week after they leave. I will be diving into that audit this week after they leave, and we'll be followed up with questions next week. There are just so many things going on here. You really do need a seasoned manager to kinda pull this all together. If you'd obviously agree that says six weeks, let's make sure we're okay, right? I have to be happy, and there has to be some balance. So that was the reason I kind of insisted we not go longer. But if we get things to go well, I'm in no hurry to run out the door. I'm not. This is, this is a good opportunity to help people, it's good to help the community. And you know, the people in Gladwin are supporting us, and we'll send resources. The people in Standish, if we need, will help us, and the people at Auburn will help us. So we're in a great spot. I've got three or four other communities that want us to succeed. So I think we're in a good place, and I hope we continue to move ahead, because there's lots that need to be done, and I sense Don and everybody's been overwhelmed. So I really think as soon as I get in here and start helping, things will slowly get better, so.
All right, thank you, thank you, Bob. Well, with that, I'd like to make a, um, a resolution for the interim city manager for City Pin County. And the resolution is copies are in your packets. I'll read it out to you guys and to the audience. Uh, resolution RE for interim city manager. Whereas the city manager, current city manager is given sixty-day notice per straight to employment agreement design and city manager from City Pin County. And whereas the finance and personnel policy committee of the city council, where City Pin County has sought the city manager services from numerous candidates through various municipal entities. And whereas the financing policy personnel and financing personnel committee has recommended to the city council that Robert L. Moffett of, of, from Gliven be employed as the city manager in training from the date following the passage of this resolution until midnight, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty, at a rate of thirty-five dollars per hour, during the activities required to be the interim city manager for City Pin County. And whereas the following, the last day of service by the current city manager is contemplated that Robert Moffett would become the interim city manager commencing at twelve oh one AM on January fifteenth, two thousand twenty. And whereas this agreement is good for a principal term of six months, and can be renewed either on a month-to-month basis or by agreement as amended to this agreement as agreed to by the parties. And whereas attached here to Exhibit Eight is a copy of the proposed employment agreement between City Pin County and Robert L. Moffett, it's possible to be interim city manager. Now therefore, be a result that, that the city authorizes to appropriate representatives to execute the contract and to be bound to retain the services of Robert L. Moffett as city manager in training for, for the period from December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, to January fourteenth, two thousand twenty. And to be retained as interim city manager for a minimum of six months from January fifteenth through July fourteenth, two thousand twenty. That is my resolution and motion.
I'll second the motion of the resolution regarding interim city manager, Mr. Moffett.
We have a motion, the City of Pin County Resolution, interim manager, and seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take a roll call, I vote.
Councilperson Keeney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thatcher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Welcome aboard, Mr. Moffett.
I look forward to working with everyone.
I'm sorry, motion carried.
Uh, as far as anything else, finance and personality and some other topics, but basically it's filling the positions, the key positions and working with the interim city manager to fill those positions as quickly as possible. That's, you know, the, um, um, agreement of the committee members as far as setting that priority. Uh, we also discuss the audit, how process coming out and, and, um, discuss that, and, uh, city manager, interim, interim city manager in training, we'll go, be going through that. Uh, hopefully, it will be accomplished by the end of the year, what needs to be done, so.
If I could just update you on that, it's okay. We, we are sitting with them tomorrow morning. We're gonna have a draft in a couple of days, and we'll be asking some questions. We do need a meeting with them to present prior to the end of the month. And Don and I should have that information tomorrow as far as when they could come and meet with us, because legally we have to adopt it. And you didn't tell me or us that you didn't think the state would grant any extensions. We have to adopt it this month. We're scheduled to be closed on the thirtieth and thirty-first, so we're, I'm hoping we're somewhere no later than the twenty-ninth, having our meeting with them. But that information will be available, and I'm sure Don will help get that out tomorrow.
So plan is to schedule special meeting for that?
We will as soon as we know when they can come present. And I'm sorry, but we do need to make sure we have a quorum, so we get that adopted. It is a legal requirement, and we have to take care of it. So we'll work with it, we know it's Christmas, and we've got most of you here will be able to take care of that.
So are you asking for a special meeting?
We're gonna, yeah, but we won't know mayor till tomorrow, when the auditors come. So we wanna have it during a normal time, but we need to see their availability, and we will know that tomorrow, I must say, probably by one o'clock or so. Don will know, and we'll need a schedule of special at that time. If we try to get that nailed down today, we just couldn't wish that far.
Okay, well, we'll wait to hear recommendations and set up that. With that, I have no other info, no other information for the finance and personnel committee. Committee members have anything else? That's it, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Public safety, Chairman Coyer?
First off, I'd like to thank the Pin County Police Department for the stuff of the cruiser. That was wonderful. It's a wonderful program. Thank you very much. Thank you guys, I'll deserve it. And we haven't had a meeting yet for public safety. Um, and then, Don, I just wanted to ask you real quick, you have a status update on Sergeant Spencer?
At this time, he's still expected to return in March.
March, okay.
March.
All right.
He did go to, uh, the Workman's Comp doctor, but I haven't had an update from Workman's Comp yet.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing else, Mayor?
Thank you. Park and Recreation, Chairman, Chairperson Ford?
Oh, we have not had a meeting, although I'd like to set something up at work after the holidays to maybe start planning for the park and recreation. Um, that will be with Sherry and Chris. So other than that, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Downtown Development Authority, Mayor Phil, Chairperson Saha?
Yes, we had our, um, meeting last week. Uh, went through our two public notice meetings that was required by the state to provide information on the, um, activities of the DDA, its financial position, so on and so forth. And, uh, presented historical information to those that attended. Um, and also they invited the taxing authorities that, uh, um, we, we take, we generate our TIFRA funds from, that being the City of Pin County, Bay County, Bay Metro, and Delta College. Those entities were invited to these meetings, too. Um, we had pushed, planned on presenting the, uh, extension renewal plan for the City Pin County DDA at this month's meeting. Um, things got, uh, delayed as far as public notices, and basically it's my fault I'm doing that. Um, so we pushed it to next month's meeting in January, which will be the formal public hearing or renewal of City Pin County DDA. And, uh, presentations will be provided at that point in time. I did, uh, supply your packets, historical information on the DDA, and, uh, projects we have accomplished over the last thirty years now. Um, DDA was established in nineteen ninety, and we had a first run of ten, twenty-year term, and it was renewed in two thousand ten for an additional ten-year extension. Uh, it's coming, the plan is, uh, through recommendations of our board and, and, and the, our attorney, you know, to ask for the extension of additional twenty years for the new plan. Um, that new plan will go out, it should be a copy to all of council members at this point. And, uh, naturally, it will be in the next, next month's packet and presentation, too. But as far as detailing all the projects that the DDA has done over its life, it's, it's, it's quite a bit. And, uh, historically, historically, we came to, close to estimate about two point nine million dollars of the DDA through, uh, um, through a combination of, uh, exercising its funding and, 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 uh, getting grants as far as improvements of different projects that we have performed throughout the town over the years. So the next, next meeting will go into a little further as far as the historical accomplishments and projects and break down, break down a lot of the, uh, for taxing entities, what, you know, what, uh, the costs are to each taxing entity. Basically, all TIFRA works, you know, through those taxing entities, City of Pin County, Bay County, Delta College, and Bay Metro, we are allowed to collect the, the commercial taxes generated by City of Pin County business, uh, businesses, and those, those taxes, uh, from a, a baseline established in nineteen ninety. That difference between then and now, we, we're allowed to collect, uh, those funds to go into our, uh, Downtown Development Authority Fund to be used on projects, which are our, our development plan. Uh, so that leverage itself, uh, City Pin County makes up all our re, annual revenues, fifty-seven percent of our revenues. Bay County government generates thirty-six percent of our revenue, which means our taxes paid go with the county, and they come back to the City of Pin County DDA, uh, for use for our projects. And also Delta College and Bay Metro. Delta College is about eight percent, and Bay Metro is right around that two percent level. So it's a, it's a good leverage program that returns the monies of our, uh, commercial properties paying taxes back to our city to, to be used on worthwhile projects. So it's a good strategic planning source for the city, too. Our, our new plan encompasses a lot of ideas that we have talked about, uh, um, in a, for a twenty-year span, uh, including housing, senior housing, a lot of different other things. Uh, so we had brainstorming session in October with, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Pin County Township, the school system, and, uh, came up with that list that we can part, that has been this plan, uh, made, pointing to be presented. So if you get the opportunity, anybody out in the audience wants a copy of this plan, part of the next meeting, you know, give me a holler, invite over where I'm at. Uh, you can email us to anybody. In the city, you should have one at the desk out here, too, a copy of the plan. Anybody can come in and take a look at it, too. Uh, but I do have it in PDF form, so if anybody has an email, I can pop it to anybody, so. Uh, so just let me know. And if there's any, a couple DDA members in the audience, I don't know if they have any comments at this point, Cliff or Jeanette?
Well, you spoke very highly.
So with that, if there's nothing else to do.
There. I was approached a few different times about a letter that was sent out, maybe throughout the.
Yeah, the public, that public notice letter was supposed to go out to all, all of the, uh, tax, tax, taxable properties within the DDA district. That's the color part of that map. And, uh, through the span of our life, the thirty years, the tax codes don't match up with, with the current tax codes, so the attorney recommended that we send it to every taxing, tax parcel in City Pin County. So those outside the district, everybody don't pertain to them. Uh, but, um, what is required, anybody sitting inside that, that directory that, in that, uh, public notice outline is the DDA district, which is the N-13 corridor, Kaiser Street corridor, and the link of Third Street in, into the Kaiser Street corridor. So those are the current districts and mixed office service districts. And it's some houses, particularly in, uh, on the Third Street corridor, there's some residential properties mixing in that, that kind of mix there. But that's where it was intended to go out. If we could identify all those properties across our systems, that would be the issue with the assessive, which we generate that list from, minimum.
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying. The ones that had contacted me, they were just confused about it. They didn't really know it was for the DDA, uh, what are you doing with zoning? And, you know, all these questions, so I just had to tell them it had to do with, uh, putting in a new DDA plan and sort of follow up, so.
Any other questions? That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I have another question.
Oh, sorry.
Do we wanna start the public hearing?
Oh, yes, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing to review. DDA renewal plan, uh, for next month's meeting?
I'll support that.
I'll second. We have a motion to put the DDA plan for a public hearing for the January meeting and second. Any discussion? Do you, uh, roll the call, or do you just?
Your call.
No.
Okay, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Ordinance, Chairperson Batcher?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Fireboard, fire report, Mayor Gibson. Myself and, uh, Councilwoman Coyer sit on the fireboard with, uh, Councilwoman Coon as an alternate. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at three thirty at the township hall. And I do believe, uh, all the entities will be there for the meeting along with the Northern Bay ambulance. And we're working to, it's our job to educate the residents what the fire board is trying to do. And some folks think it the wrong way, or whatever, but we're trying to move our fire department in a direction where we have some full-time paid positions. The day of volunteer fire department is pretty much over anymore. It's, it's hard to do it, and these guys that volunteer give up their time with their families, It's, it's hard to do it and these guys that volunteer give up their time with their families, whether it's Christmas Day, New Year's, whatever it is, to save somebody's life in an accident or a fire or whatever it is. So again, we're just trying to, I'm trying to educate our residents in what direction our fire department is handled, is heading with Pin County Township and Fraser Township. So we're trying to get the other townships involved, uh Garfield, Mount Forest. Gibson is kind of questionable, but I believe they'll all be at the meeting tomorrow to discuss, to try to move forward. And it's gonna be a timely process. It's not gonna happen this month, next month, or whatever. It'll be a timely process. So that's all I have on the fire report. Any questions? And I pretty much covered the NBA, uh myself, sit on the board, Councilwoman Ford sits on the board. I'm not sure who the alternate is. I think Councilman Thatcher. I do the alternate, you then. The special event chairman, chairperson, Laporte.
Yep, I want to say um last Monday we did have a meeting and we would like to thank the township and everybody that was involved. It was a great event for the reindeer and Santa and Toys for Tots. Um, we went through six hundred and eighty-one kids came through this year. We made some discussions that are kind of up in the air because we'd like to meet monthly to bring other things to. Mainly we need some sponsors because we would like to, we're thinking about getting some kind of warming tent. That way the kids could leave, the reindeer come across and get into a warming tent, drink their hot chocolate there, have their popcorn. And then, you know, as their turn comes through, then they can proceed to see Santa. And there's actually a bunch of other um things that we would like to get, but everything's kind of up in the air. And we will report monthly, let you know where we're at for our next step. But main thing is we do need sponsors. We need our, we need heat for our warming tents, we need tents with all sides. And we'd like to have some kind of Christmas music downtown, you know, coming through town. We would need a, like a three-wall tent for there. And I actually have my cousin that volunteered to, to do the music for us. So I already got that screwed away, but if anybody has any suggestions, you know, just drop us a line and we can bring them up to our needs. And that's all I have to report.
Was there anything on uh making the event bigger or getting other people involved?
Well, it's kind of up in the air. We are talking, you know, since it's like from five to seven, you know, kids are, parents are getting out of work and kids are getting out of school. We'd like to have some station food trucks. You know, maybe somebody could like sell a slice of pizza for a dollar or a can of pop or whatever. And as I say, it's all kind of up in the air right now. And we'd like to get lighting on Santa. We'd like to have more lights down through town because it was kind of dark for each table.
I personally would like to thank our DPW guys for the decorations and doing the garland on the light poles. Looked very nice, uh wreaths up at the top, so. Lot of hard work. They got it done. It was a very good event and I'm very pleased with the short notice we had to put it together, how it turned out. So thank you all that was involved. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. A pilot program.
Nothing due to reports and uh with Mr. Moffett coming on board, uh allow him a chance to review the proposal. Just to update, that's a Duchesne project for on North Street, they have a senior, senior housing.
I know the developer and we worked with him on a project a while ago last year, so I am up on that and I'd be glad to help Brian. Thank you, sir.
So nothing, nothing more on that, Mr. Mayor? By, by the way, their deadline's April first to apply for funding based on that pilot, so.
Okay. You have a proposal at hand, do you? Okay, maybe tomorrow I can stop to see you at my way of a meeting.
Not a big rush, they got three months or two months anyway before critical.
You'll have to look at it the next couple of weeks knowing you're close five or six days. And I'm planning on hauling a few things home to look at and so on a little better after the holidays would go. So I'd be happy to look at that. I like the DDA plan too, and I'm not sure I should take that one off the counter. Okay, now I'll take care of that. But I do want to look at that too, and I know it's well-written. The attorney seemed to be very sharp. Well, I said to everybody a little while ago, economic development is one of my passions. This is one of the tools we have. They do capture about twenty thousand extra. Part I need everybody to understand is the city is like this big umbrella over all of what we do and they're part of us. They're part of the city. So I've already committed to Brian that I'd be more active and more involved and we would do things to try and help what they could do to help us. There's a little bit of money, discretionary money, and they're doing good things already and I appreciate you laying that charge, Brian. And it's really important as far as trying to move this community to a better place. You're gonna be one of our main partners in some of that stuff.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The, the NBA special assessment. I've talked about it for about two months now here in council. At this point, having Mr. Moffett come aboard, he's not up to speed on it, I don't believe, so I'm gonna set it off until January, so whatever documents or whatever we have to put together, that it's uh legal and binding and attorney's opinion on whatever we want, so I'll put it off till the January.
Mr. Mayor.
What, you know, you said the NBA, you know, for that, you should explain what that is, just initials, people don't know what that is.
I was gonna and I thought, well, no, I'm not, you know, but uh what it involves is basically in a nutshell, everyone throughout the townships, the city, whatever, if you own a piece of property that you live on, you're assessed a value on your taxes to pay for the Northern Bay ambulance as a service, is what's happening. In the City of Pin County, in other words, I guess we're just kind of lenient in a sense of everybody was charged that assessment that owns a parcel. But then when you get into multi-unit power shows, and I'll just say like Whispering Pine. Whispering Pine sits on two parcels. They're charged X amount of dollars for two parcels. What we're looking at doing is assessing each unit that fee. You know, eighty percent of our ambulance runs or so, seventy-five, eight, is at that complex. There's a lot of runs there, so. And we have smaller duplexes, whatever. It's, it's not that we're trying to be mean or rude, but as I said in the last board meeting, I'll be honest with you, I recommended not charging the full. And the assessment value is thirty-two thirty, I believe. Don't hold me because it's raised on this year, twenty twenty. I, I do have it, but I.
It's thirty-two thirty.
Thirty-two thirty?
Yes, thirty-two dollars, thirty cents.
When I asked the board members, you know, I didn't feel that we should raise it the full amount. Well, there was discussion on it and they says, why not? Because everyone else has to pay it, so what's fair for one is fair for all. So that's where it lies. And that's why uh we'll look into it a little bit farther and uh Councilwoman uh Ford sits on the board and she was at the meeting with me, so was her first time at a, in a meeting and I think she probably learned a lot and it, it, everything that happens up here for us on these councils and committees, it, it's all a new learning experience for everybody. It, it, it just isn't something that we was born with and can do the right things. It's a learning curve and it takes us time to get in that curve, learn it, and do what's right in our hearts for our residents. So with that, any other questions on the special assessment?
No, I would just say it's only two dollars and sixty-nine cents a month that figures out too, so. I say the charge is only two dol- two dollars and sixty-nine cents a month. That's what it figures out to thirty-two thirty. So that's all it is. It isn't a real big amount when you figure it per month.
Like you own a milk.
Right, and that's just, that's all units, not just Whispering Pines, not just the senior living, even like the multi-unit homes, correct?
Anything, you know, for the one apartment. Okay. The DDA staffing and contractors, Councilman Saha.
Yeah, we have, we have drafted and edited and went back and forth on this. Uh, I think, believe the final draft is, is available now. And once again, uh we'll sit with the, with Dawn and Bob to go with this to take a look at it before we can address it at council and DDA. Make sure it's good for all parties, so. So we'll just table that till next meeting, then. For January? Yep.
And Mayor, if I may remind you, the NBA may be February because our attorney's off recovering from medical. We, I don't think we have an attorney back till February first, so there's a lot going on in the next few weeks, so I'm really okay with that. We're going back a little bit because I've got some legal questions on that that he's gonna have to help us with. I know what you're wanting to do. I'm not sure if we can, might have to look at, maybe deal with the board and ask them for a small increase across the board. We may come to that, but we'll look and see. I'm not sure we could do what you're asking, but I'm not an assessor, so.
Okay.
We need some help on that one.
Okay, thank you. On the new business, we have the Pin County Athletic Boosters on gaming license. We're actually applying for a gaming license so that we can um have raffles and different fundraisers. Before, we were doing it under the entity of the school. The last time, the last couple of times we've applied, they told us that we've had, we have to set up our own and get our own. We can't do it under the school anymore. So that's why we're asking um the city council to approve of us to get a gaming license. I did give the form to Dawn. We do have a couple of big projects that we're looking to do at the school. I don't know if anybody's been there, but their football bleachers are horrible. Those are gonna have to get done in the next couple of years and uh we're working with Mr. View. We've talked to him a couple of different times about helping with that project also, so. Anybody else have any questions? I mean, I have one I'd like to address, but. Do I do? Not yet. Um, Dawn, are we in the guidelines to do this as the city and everything's okay?
Yes, we have done this previously for different charitable organizations. This is not our first time, so.
Okay. That answers my question, so.
And so is this an annual thing we would be doing?
Once we get the gaming license, we'll, we'll have a license. We still, every time we decide to have a raffle, we would have to apply and get a raffle um license number. So this is just allowing us to have the gaming license. We would have to apply with a, with the state every time for a raffle number.
So in answer to your question, Laura, see, I believe this is the only time council has to vote on it, then after that fact, it'll just go to the state automatically.
Right, right.
Cliff, what's the official name of the organization?
Pin County Athletic Booster Club.
I can personally vouch for Cliff. Um, my boys are all involved in basketball and he's always on top of that in the fundraising, the concessions, and the raffles that he does. And it's the last time they brought in, you know, a, a great amount. And this, you know, as you said, it's my open up doors opportunity, so I, I would personally vouch for that myself.
I'll make a motion to execute the local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses at this meeting.
I'll support that motion.
For the Pin County Athletic Booster Club.
Sorry, Brian.
Okay, we have a local governing body resolution for charitable gambling license for the Pin County Athlete, Athletic Boosters Club. And second it. Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Councilmember Laporte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrigan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thatcher?
Yes.
Councilman Keeney?
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Do you mind if I maybe excuse, I was supposed to pick a daughter up at six? Thank you. Okay. Board of Review appointment. And we have Carol Maida being, being added. She's already been on the Board of Review. Her term just expired, I believe, and she's going back on for another, how many years?
I think it's three, isn't it?
Three.
It's in your package.
Three, three.
Yep, three years. So Mr. Johnson, so glad you, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I need to go back to Carol and get that finished.
Okay.
Yeah, great. I'll make a motion to approve Carol Maida on his term, two-year term on the Board of Review, three-year term, right?
No, I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion to accept on the Board of Review for Maida for three-year term. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Now we gotta see the volunteer.
Uh, I wanna address something else here. When I was going to Mr. Jackson. We have the city, we're not in good shape with board members. All the terms have expired and never, nobody ever got put back on or asked. We need the residents, we need through the newspaper, and this is where it starts. To step up and help us in these boards. In my eyes, they should have never really expired. You might have had one, one that's taken or whatever, but most of the boards. So I'll just review what they are. The Board of Review, uh, three-year term. Three people, compensation committee, election committee, which is the clerk, city manager, city assessor, planning commissioner, three-year term. Uh, and one, three people, one council representative, the zoning board, two-year term. Five people, and zoning board of appeals, two-year term. Five people. So there's a lot of board openings and hopefully we have some residents step forward and jump aboard and, and give us some help. Alright, item C, volunteer policy. House of Man, who can speak first on that?
Yeah, the reason why I brought it up is just before Mayor, before Mayor Rosal resigned, I had at the meeting offered to volunteer to help with re- grant research and/or writing. And when I talked to Mayor, before Mayor Rosal about it, I said, okay, you gotta make sure if you do this, you get city council approval, and do this, city council approval. And then he had it all worked out to where he got the city attorney and the city attorney says, yeah, you have to volunteer policy in place because we don't have one. Let's face it. Not many people come to volunteer, so you wouldn't think of it. So that's why I proposed that we come up with a volunteer policy, so when we have volunteers come in, you know, we, we're already covered.
We have a motion on that? Are you seeking to?
I have a proposal, so city council will come to the volunteer policy.
So who, who's gonna put the policy together? What, what's your plan? What's your?
Uh, my plan is to send it to whatever committee to come up, hash out the details, and then when they hash it all out, we're into the council and the board.
And that would go to?
Can I make a suggestion? Can I, just a suggestion? That's really all I could do at this place, make a suggestion. I think we need an application for board appointments and volunteers, and I'm sorry, your request followed efforts. If you're asking grants, I'm gonna keep you busy. Um, because we need to figure out how to raise money outside and put with our local money to get some of these things done that you all would like to see done. It's gotta be an effort. And I'm gonna say about February, I'm gonna be calling in and asking you to come in. I would expect we may even at some point here in the next couple of months, talk about maybe trying to do something with this park a lot. USDA has got a funding deadline in April. I would like to bring in. We've already talked today about trying to get some of those USDA people here to talk to us before we adapt the budget, so if we need a little match money, we can try and figure that out. So if you're willing to work with me, I'll pull you in and you can help me with some of this because time is gonna be a struggle for the staff side for a while and um, if you're willing to help and you're willing to wear enough, I'll put you in place where you could do that. I'll be seeing you on a regular basis, it sounds like, so. Um, but yeah, I'll put you to work. But I, I, I think we need to try and get an application and I'm willing to call a couple of other communities and see if we can't get a couple of them here and let you guys kind of kick that around and figure that out. So I think with the board work that needs to be done, we really need something from that side too, and I think we would do something here. I think when we have a need and we need volunteers, then we can put it, work with paper and put it out. There's something here, hey, I'd like to sign up for Christmas and help with some of the stuff that Ann's doing on her committee, or maybe they are willing to come in and help here from time to time. There are things that can be done. Answer the phone, take phone messages, up on around here a little bit, so. Couple of those folks would be of interest from time to time that I could work with. But again, we're probably into February before there's time for that, but those are all things I'd like to do, help with. So I'll be in touch when I have an interest. Um, maybe I'm talking on a turn, but I guess the one thing I want to say tonight was, if you guys can come up with five or six goals for the city in this next year and please make city hall somewhere near the top of that list. It would be good to know what you guys want. We know we've been overloaded on this side before I got here and I don't wanna get into that. So if we could talk about, you can give me one to twenty, but let's dealt with the first five are. If we get past those, great, but, let's streamline. Where we're putting our efforts and where we're putting our energy in the things that are gonna have the most bang for your bucks. So if you want, any of us to doubt next month or around Christmas time, um, let Dawn and I, I at least, you know, look at it and talk about it and see what we could do. Then if there's a little money left, then we kinda know which way to steer that too, right? So just something I want you to think about, trying to make things better for all of us. If we give us four, five, six top priorities moving ahead, then we'll make that a priority and any free time to work on those things, so.
I have a question. Um, you said to get applications to basically volunteer or come in and answer phones. Um, when our manager, Bill Giacera, left and there was only Yvonne here, I offered to answer phones and, you know, go get her changed from the benches, help out because she was the only person here. I was told that was a conflict of interest and we're not allowed to do that.
Oh, you're allowed to volunteer, you're allowed to help the manager, you're allowed to help the staff, you're allowed to help the community. If you sat on the county board of commissioners, we might have a problem, okay? But you're allowed to do that. I don't see you helping out the community in any kind of conflict at all. I just can't see it. If we're not all thinking about that, we should be, right? If there's a strip of grass near your house and in July it was knee-high and you can cut it, don't you think? We all do a little and then collectively. So yes, as you have an interest to get involved in those things, we'll work with you to get involved. It's kind of limited how much we can take on and how much we get done, but if we could kinda get the DDA to kinda focus two, three, four things and the council to give us five or four, five, six things. And it's okay. I need to know what fifteen through twenty looks like too, but I also need to know where my compass needs to be, right? Because if we put our heads together, we'll maximize the outcome, so.
So you, are you fine with table that and work it out in the next month?
Yeah, well, most would be to send it to a committee, so it works out because the city attorney had a good point. You know, what if we had somebody volunteer, you know, and they got hurt? Well, would we be covered or? So it just, be on the safe side or rather be safe and sorry and just have a volunteer policy worked out as part of the new handbook even, so that we don't get caught in a bind.
Do you have a copy of the letter from the attorney stating all that, Chris?
No, they, they had a, was it Mayor Rosal, Dawn had where she was there and the mayor had, did the uh city attorney.
Yeah, it was a phone conversation.
Okay.
Well, if we can just keep it on unfinished business and um, I'm thinking something like that would go to finance and personnel. So next time we have a meeting, we can address it all.
At our best chance is to find a community around here that might have a policy we could look at. Cause it's really grasp at straws. But I think about the Christmas stuff that these gals are doing. I mean, we got volunteers all over the place. And to try and do a policy for the Christmas event alone might be a challenge. My thought was if we could get them to say, this is what we wanna do, and when we have a need, we go to file and say, we have somebody who fits in that bucket. Oh, great, we have somebody who's interested. So we can engage somebody as a partner, as a participant, or as somebody who may even champion that for a while, so. I think with you, it was grants, and with Ann, it was one of the things that I think we just work together and get more involved. Again, there's no conflict about us working together and helping the community. That is why we're here, I believe.
Okay, then we'll just move that unfinished business on the bound one.
Okay, public comment. Mr. Drin, chat. This pertains to the DDA and just a little bit, yes. I just wanna. Five minutes. I have the same policy as chairman of the board, five minutes. Little education on DDA. Uh, the county is not opposed to DDA's, but you have to remember the money that is captured is tax money that the taxpayers have pulled out for millages. Some of them, they're not just for the county. Some of them are nine-one-one, mosquito control, uh, senior citizen, uh, Bay Metro, veterans. So the difference between that baseline and what it is worth, that property is worth now, that's what gets captured. As Ryan was saying and Bob was saying, it's about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year that's, that the county is let go, letting go, because we give permission to do this, to the city. The reason for that, way back long ago, that community building out there, the Bay County gave the city twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That was Pinconning's take because we're all paying taxes. Though of course, uh, we've got a community center and all these things that are in Bay City. How many people here use them? Not very many. That was kind of the way to even that out. During serious budget cuts, two thousand seven, two thousand and eight, I was the only person that didn't vote for it, but they took that twenty-five thousand dollars away. At that point in time, the DDA stepped up and the city stepped up, took over. It has always been my position on there and the majority, not all, the majority of the commissioners, that, that twenty-five thousand is kind of a way to balance, alright? And it's an off-the-record balance between what they used to do so that the city is getting something back. The only problem is the county is, is really cutting back. We went out to monitor, we just got through with Banger. No more twenty years, folks. We're going ten. Now, if, I think maybe I have enough support. I only need four votes to just let it go at twenty. I'm the chairman of the board, you know, everybody's got little pet projects and stuff. Well, they know this is one of mine and I think we can let this go. But I'm just, I just wanna educate you on, on how Bay County feels about that. The number two thing, do not end up with a whole bunch of money in your bank. You got a project, go do some projects. When we shut down monitor or rearranged it, they had almost a million dollars of tax money out there. A million dollars. They're sitting on, well, we, we might have a project. So we redid that whole thing and they expired. They don't have no more bank. When they had a project, they come, hey, we wanna do another Fabianos, we might wanna start collecting. Hey, great, here you go, alright? Unfortunately, Banger Township, they did not get their, and they're, they were collecting somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. They had about three-quarters of a million dollars in the bank. They didn't get their paperwork. These letters that our DDA here in Little Pinconning, we're so far ahead, and yours is up what now? April?
April fourth.
Yeah, they wait till the last minute, attorney overlooked it, they lost out. They don't have no more DDA. Their Tifa is done. So I mean, yeah, they're not happy, but what are you gonna do? You have to follow the law that's been in place from the state of Michigan. So, anybody got any questions or anything here? So I'm going back for you, trying to see if we could just kinda, you know.
I wanna thank you in advance for your support for our DDA plan. I'm counting on it. Thank you, Commissioner, very much.
Okay, no problem.
We need your support. We need the part of us being successful.
Public comment, anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Debbie Voight and I'm here to address the letter that we received in the mail, all of us city. I live behind hurdles. The letter that we got with the map, number one, there's no legend on there. Number two, there's no roads. How am I gonna be affected by this change? Are my taxes gonna go up? Or how is this going to affect me as a resident having a house directly behind a business? That's number one. And then number two is the Fourth Street Road is so horrible. The road is actually sinking in front of my mailbox. To where I can't even get to my mail when it get raining because the water is up to my knees.
Can I take the first question? I know the answer. Your taxes won't go up at all. The good news is part of your taxes that you would pay that would go to the county will stay here to help us work on our community, but your tax number will not change at all, but how it's spread is different. So that's good. And I can't speak to the roads yet, but I know we got issues.
So when, where you stay in there, you know, real, re- um, location, displaced residents, where, where are you going with that? What, what is that, what, what does that mean? Are you just placing residents that are going to be zoned commercial, that actually have residential houses now?
No. It says we won't displace people. That's what that language is intended to say. We will not displace people. We won't do it. And again, I, I've never ever taken land from anybody for public purpose that I certainly don't want to. Um, but no, the intention is we won't displace people with the things that we do. I'm sure there's probably a rare exception where thirteen hundred people win and two people lose. That we might go move that way, but generally it's, it's a, we're gonna help the community, but we're not gonna put people out of their home.
Thank you.
You, sir.
Yeah, my name is Jonathan Joseph. I live here in Pinconning since like two thousand and eleven. I don't have a driver's license at all. I have disabilities, so I rely on my pedal bike where I have to walk in the town. And a lot of times during the winter, we get these big wind, we get these big winter storms that we get slammed with snow and our sidewalks are so packed with snow that a lot of us have to walk in the street. What we gonna do about getting these sidewalks cleared off to where people that have to ride bikes like myself and um, a couple of these other people that probably have to? How we gonna be able to clear these sidewalks off because it comes down to it, someone gets hit, that person's gonna end up suing the county or the city of Pinconning and that ain't gonna look great. How we gonna be able to fix that? With that, that's been, that's been, I've been dealing with that problem since I moved down here. And that's been two thousand and eleven. I'm ready to see these sidewalks cleared off, be able to walk to work because Lori, she knows me very well. I used to work with her. During the winter, if I have to get to work at six o'clock in the morning, during the winter, I don't have to walk in the street to go to work. I wanna be able to go on the sidewalk when people are going by. That way I feel safe. I don't want, have to walk in the street really, oh, oh, someone's coming. I got a little snow to get to work. That ain't cool. We need our sidewalks cleared. We need our sidewalks ice and the snow free for people that ride bikes. He rides a bike. I ride a bike myself. I rode my bike up here to the meetings tonight for this. I would like to see our sidewalks stay clear of no snow and ice. And I live at the Pines myself. I would like to see our sidewalks stay clear of no snow and ice. And I live at the pines myself. So Mr. Mayor, when you said pushing the pines, that woke me up. I've lived up at the pines since two thousand and eleven. So.
If I may, let me go back to something I said at the beginning of the meeting. If we all do our part, we can make our community better. The legal remedy to your solution is every property owner has a responsibility to take care of that sidewalk. It's not our responsibility. The roads are our responsibility.
Why can't you guys make it? My best friend lives on Lincoln Park. Their city limp, their city law is if you do not keep your sidewalks cleared of snow, ice, even keeping the grass cut, they get fined. Why can't the residents here in Pin County have the same kind of law put down on them? I just find that kind of disrespectful that cities, different cities are like that. It should all be the same. And my uncle, my uncle lives in Sterling Heights. He even told me the same law is down in his city. And they're only thirty-three minutes apart from each other. Why can't our city be the same thing as, as down there? I just find that very rude that people that ride bikes, that either have to ride bikes or walk to work or walk to town to get something, have to go through snow to get there. Or walk in the street and possibly get hit. Our sidewalks need to stay clear of snow, need to stay clear of ice for people that ride bikes and walk, walk back and forth into town or walk back and forth to work. How can we fix this issue?
Pride is the first thing, right? We've been talking about that a lot for the last couple of weeks. We've gotta build pride in our community. The people need to do it. If we had a newsletter, there'd be a platform to remind them. I know, um, our friend here at the newspaper is willing to help us with some things. And I think maybe this is something he and I could work on, an article or some kind of news blast in the local paper, asking people to be compliant and be respectful of people like you who need to get up down the sidewalks. We don't have the money to blow them off. We don't. And we try and do the best we can with our roads. We're actually short one person in that department right now. So that is one of the priorities, is to try and get the city all going and try and, try and get that a little more help. And Ed Gladwin, for example, we wrestled with this at the downtown, cause you end up with some businesses that are open and some businesses that aren't open. Eventually, the DEA, the manager, the city council all worked together and they took care of that part. But we don't have the money to get out in the residential. But we could get a blast out there reminding people where it's coming and please be respectful of others by keeping it open. It's our first good move. I don't have an easy answer. And some of the things that we're gonna talk about in the next year or so, we don't have the money to do. And this is one of those things. We don't have enough money to clean them all. But we'd ask people to step up and take a little pride and take a little better care of their place. So we'll start with the paper. I'm open to ideas from the council, from our manager, from anybody else. But this is, this is a problem. And I guess the solution could be moved to Florida, but I'm not moving to Florida. I don't expect.
I always.
Yeah, I just said, we don't have the money to wholeheartedly swallow that. It is the legal requirement of the property owners, business, commercial, industrial. You know, and certainly I'm hoping at some point we could be in a partner, cause I gotta believe some of these sidewalks probably need to be replaced. And in that case, we have to at some point step up and help with that. So I hear what you're saying. I don't have an easy answer. Five minutes.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I will state, in public comment, council does not have, is not required to answer you. So sometimes we can, sometimes we don't. We listen to your complaint. I'm sure if you got with Councilwoman Betcher, she's now in control of the ordinances. I believe there is a snow ordinance. So we need to review that snow ordinance and see whose responsibility is to clean the sidewalks. We're not talking streets, the sidewalks. So I don't have that answer, but I'm pretty sure each resident is responsible for their sidewalk. But it hasn't been done for years. It hasn't been enforced for years. It's something that we need to look at, as Mr. Maffa said. And we will look at it, but let me tell you, it's gonna be some upset people because you're making this change and making them shovel their sidewalk that they didn't have to do. So we have, the highway is contracted out. The sidewalk on both sides of the highway is contracted out in snowstorms to be done. That's, that's the only.
Paid, paid by the DDA.
Paid by the DDA. That's the only one that is done. So I hope that kinda answers your question, but you know, it's still a hard issue. Hasn't been dealt with and we'll move forward with it. Mr. Dranchat.
I'll use my last thirty seconds real quick on the volunteers. Bay County would be lost without volunteers. We have over a hundred and twenty volunteers alone at our animal shelter. Department on Aging, seventy-five. Yeah, a lot of them are out, you know, senior citizens, you know, can't make fun of them cause I'm, I'm, I'm that age now. But senior citizens, they come out and, so I mean, use your, get out there with these volunteers. You know, there's people in our community here that have knowledge of a bunch of stuff and just ask them to look for something to do. Thank you.
Any other public business?
My name's Michael Wilson. Only a business in city, Ikaia Street. Kind of beating a dead horse here by guess. We're gonna come at it again. I tried to get put on new business and got removed. At our last council meeting on eleven eighteen, Mayor Gibson, in his own admission, stated, and I quote, "I live here," referring to Manitou Street, "but I stay here," referring to Kitchen Road. I was wondering if, as a council, has, have we talked about that or is that just something we're gonna sweep under the rug? That's the first part of my question. Cause at the last meeting, Councilwoman Ford made a comment, a statement in public comment that she wanted to clarify that she didn't know that Mayor Gibson didn't live inside the city limits. So I was giving everybody else an opportunity to possibly let us know if they know or not. Alright, Mayor Gibson also stated that, that the Pin County City Charter states that he has to be a taxpayer of the city. Did some investigation through public records, found a parcel number zero-nine dash one-eight oh dash zero-two-three dash three-zero-zero dash five-five-zero dash zero-one, which is located at one oh three Manitou Street, has delinquent taxes from two thousand eighteen and the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. And also delinquent taxes for the summer of two thousand nineteen and the amount of three sixty-seven ninety-one. Therefore, doesn't sound like you're a taxpayer of the city. And we're talking about not having money in the city and our mayor's not paying the taxes. So we, we don't wanna comment on that. I'll move on as well. In the Pin County City Charter, Charter, Article eleven, Section eleven point two, elective office declared vacant. Any elective office shall be declared vacant by the city council if, in subsection C, the incumbent ceases to be a resident of the city. Michigan election law defines residency as a place at which a person eventually sleeps, keeps his or her personal effects, and has a regular place of lodging. Doesn't sound like that's the case whatsoever. And under eleven point two of the Pin County City Charter, I request and urge that the council hold a public hearing on Mayor Gibson's residency discrepancies and set a date of beginning. And if we're not gonna talk, I have self-addressed stamped envelopes here for each one of the council members to write me and drop in your mailbox if I can quote you. In, in closing, city residents of Pin County, I don't know how we can put trust in a mayor and with the council. We're just not gonna say anything about, you know, giving the mayor the keys to our city with the tax issues, with residency discrepancies. This stuff needs to be addressed. And like I said, and Ms. Ford, Councilwoman Ford is the only one to step forward the last time and said anything. So, and to have me removed off, off new business, I, I, believe me, I'm still, I'm coming next month too. This, this isn't lightly. I'll keep submitting. I'll submit to the new person and we'll keep moving forward. I have other things that we can bring up as well. I think this is something that needs to be taken care of. I mean, you guys are all in this together. We know he doesn't live there, then why is he on, why is he on the board?
Why is it you think I don't live there?
Because at the last meeting, you said you didn't.
I didn't state that.
It's on record.
It says, "I stayed there, I stayed there."
No, you did not. I haven't quoted.
What's the big deal?
It is a big deal. I believe Ann LaFord on the video said, "Mayor, you have to live here." I'll quote that too, cause it's on, I reviewed the video again today. But you said being a resident was paying taxes. You're not paying taxes.
The delinquent, sir. I have to march to pay them.
I know, and you're the mayor in the face of our city.
What business does the mayor with delinquent taxes? I'm on a fixed income. I have to march to pay those taxes. So you're gonna use that?
No, that was just one thing I dug up after I found out that you told.
You seem to be digging up a lot about me. Are you following me?
I'm not following you.
Are you blocking me?
No, I talked to a couple of your neighbors though, and they say you don't live there. I can bring them in next meeting too, and they can come in here.
Really?
Yeah. I have a son that lives two doors down from you. I have a church member that lives around the corner from you.
Really?
Yes, I do.
And you know what I was told? Who was at my residence peeking in the windows?
I was never at your residence peeking in the windows, believe me.
That's what I was told, is like you say, hearsay. Everybody knows.
This isn't hearsay though.
Your hearsay is you was at my residence.
Oh, okay.
Looking in the windows.
No, nobody was at your residence. But at the last meeting, you said on camera that you live here, but you stay out there.
Three times though.
I will be on the agenda the next time, believe me.
You'll be on the agenda if the manager and me, the mayor, let you be on the agenda. That's how it's set up. If you wanna be public servant.
Are we gonna be triggered again right now? Is that what we're doing?
If you wanna be a public servant, then you do your research. And learn how it works.
I would be a public servant because I can use my residency, my business, right? Like you're using this house over here.
No.
That's zoned light industrial. It's not.
We're done. We're done. You're done. Sit down.
Is that how you talk to the taxpayers in town? Because I'm a taxpayer that pays my taxes. They're not delinquent.
And furthermore, I've never met you. How do you know so much about me? Have we ever met?
Public, it's public.
Have we ever met? No, we haven't. So who put you up to this?
Nobody put me up to nothing. Nobody puts me up to anything, believe me.
Yes, we know.
Who?
You gotta adjourn.
So you can keep running at me, but then hit the gavel on me.
We have a motion to adjourn in second. On favor? Opposed?
Gotcha.
What's that? You look so good.
All worked together and they took care of that part, but we don't have the money to get out in the residential. But we could get a blast out there reminding people where it's coming and please be respectful of others by keeping it open. It's our first good move. I don't have an easy answer. And some of the things that we're gonna talk about in the next year or so, we don't have the money to do. And this is one of those things. We don't have enough money to clean them all. But we'd ask people to step up and take a little pride and take a little better care of their place. So we'll start with the paper. I'm open to ideas from the council, from our manager, from anybody else. But this is, this is a problem. And I guess the solution could be moved to Florida, but I'm not moving to Florida. I don't expect.
I always.
Yeah, I just said, we don't have the money to wholeheartedly swallow that. It is the legal requirement of the property owners, business, commercial, industrial. You know, and certainly I'm hoping at some point we could be in a partner, cause I gotta believe some of these sidewalks probably need to be replaced. And in that case, we have to at some point step up and help with that. So I hear what you're saying. I don't have an easy answer.
Five minutes.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I will state, in public comment, council does not have, is not required to answer you. So sometimes we can, sometimes we don't. We listen to your complaint. I'm sure if you got with Councilwoman Betcher, she's now in control of the ordinances. I believe there is a snow ordinance. So we need to review that snow ordinance and see whose responsibility is to clean the sidewalks. We're not talking streets, the sidewalks. So I don't have that answer, but I'm pretty sure each resident is responsible for their sidewalk. But it hasn't been done for years. It hasn't been enforced for years. It's something that we need to look at, as Mr. Maffa said. And we will look at it, but let me tell you, it's gonna be some upset people because you're making this change and making them shovel their sidewalk that they didn't have to do. So we have, the highway is contracted out. The sidewalk on both sides of the highway is contracted out in snowstorms to be done. That's, that's the only.
Paid, paid by the DDA.
Paid by the DDA. That's the only one that is done. So I hope that kinda answers your question, but you know, it's still a hard issue. Hasn't been dealt with and we'll move forward with it. Mr. Dranchat.
I'll use my last thirty seconds real quick on the volunteers. Bay County would be lost without volunteers. We have over a hundred and twenty volunteers alone at our animal shelter. Department on Aging, seventy-five. Yeah, a lot of them are out, you know, senior citizens, you know, can't make fun of them cause I'm, I'm, I'm that age now. But senior citizens, they come out and, so I mean, use your, get out there with these volunteers. You know, there's people in our community here that have knowledge of a bunch of stuff and just ask them to look for something to do. Thank you.
Any other public business?
My name's Michael Wilson. Only a business in city, Ikaia Street. Kind of beating a dead horse here by guess. We're gonna come at it again. I tried to get put on new business and got removed. At our last council meeting on eleven eighteen, Mayor Gibson, in his own admission, stated, and I quote, "I live here," referring to Manitou Street, "but I stay here," referring to Kitchen Road. I was wondering if, as a council, has, have we talked about that or is that just something we're gonna sweep under the rug? That's the first part of my question. That's the first part of my question. Because at the last meeting, Councilwoman Ford made a comment, uh, statement in public comment that she wanted to clarify that she didn't know that Mayor Gibson didn't live inside the city limits. So I was giving everybody else an opportunity to possibly let us know if they know or not. All right, uh, Mayor Gibson also stated at uh, that the Pin County City Charter states that he has to be a taxpayer of the city. Did some uh investigation through public records, found that parcel number zero nine dash one eight oh dash zero two three dash three zero zero dash five five zero dash zero one, which is located at one oh three Manitou Street, has delinquent taxes from two thousand and eighteen in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. And also delinquent taxes for the summer of two thousand and nineteen in the amount of three sixty-seven ninety-one. Therefore, doesn't sound like you're a taxpayer of the city, and we're talking about not having money in the city and our mayor's not paying taxes. So we, we, we don't wanna comment on that, I'll move on as well. Okay, man? In the Pin County City Charter, Charter, Article eleven, Section eleven point two, elective office declared vacant. Any elective office shall be declared vacant by the city council if, in subsection C, the incumbent ceases to be a resident of the city. Michigan election law defines residency as a place at which a person eventually sleeps, keeps his or her personal effects and has a regular place of lodging. Doesn't sound like that's the case whatsoever. And under eleven point two of the Pin County City Charter, I request an urge that the council hold a public hearing on Mayor Gibson's residency discrepancies and set a date immediately. And if we're not gonna talk, I have self-addressed stamped envelopes here for each one of the council members to write me and drop in your mailbox if I can quote you. In uh, in closing, um, city residents of Pin County, I don't know how we can put trust in a mayor and with the council, we're just not gonna say anything about, you know, giving the mayor the keys to our city with the tax issues, with the residency discrepancies. This stuff needs to be addressed, and like I said, and Ms. Ford, Councilwoman Ford is the only one to step forward the last time and said anything. So, and to have me removed off, off new business, I, I, believe me, I'm still, I'm coming next month too. This, this isn't lightly. I'll keep submitting, I'll submit to the new person, and we'll keep moving forward. I have other things that we can bring up as well. I think this is something that needs to be taken care of. I mean, you guys are all in this together. We know he doesn't live there, then why is he on, why is he on the board?
Why is it you think I don't live there?
Because at the last meeting, you said you didn't.
I didn't state that.
Uh, it's on record.
It says, "I stayed there, I stayed there."
No, you did not. I haven't quoted.
What's the big deal?
It is a big deal. I believe Ann LaFord on the video said, "Mayor, you have to live here." I'll quote that too, because it's on, I reviewed the video again today. But you said being a resident was paying taxes. You're not paying taxes.
The delinquent, sir. I have to march to pay them.
I know, and you're the mayor in the face of our city.
What business does the mayor with delinquent taxes? I'm on a fixed income. I have to march to pay those taxes. So you're gonna use that?
No, that was just one thing I dug up after I found out that you told
You seem to be digging up a lot about me. Are you following me?
I'm not following you.
Are you stalking me?
No, I talked to a couple of your neighbors though, and they say you don't live there. I can bring them in next meeting too, and they can come in here.
Really?
Yeah. I have a son that lives two doors down from you. I have a church member that lives around the corner from you.
Really?
Yes, I do.
And you know what I was told? You was at my residence peeking in the windows.
I was never at your residence peeking in the windows, believe me.
That's what I was told, because like you say, hearsay, everybody knows
This isn't hearsay though.
Your hearsay is you was at my residence
Oh, okay.
Looking in the windows.
No, never was at your residence. But at the last meeting, you said on camera that you live here, but you stay out there.
Three times though.
I will be on the agenda the next time, believe me.
Will be on the agenda if manager and me, the mayor, let you be on the agenda.
The manager.
That's how it's set up. If you wanna be public servant
Are we gonna be triggered again right now? Is that what we're doing?
If you wanna be a public servant, then you do your research.
If I, I would be a
And learn how it works.
I would be a public servant because I can use my residency, my business, right? Like you're using this house over here.
No.
That's zoned light industrial. It's not zone residential.
We're done. You're done. Sit down.
Is that how you talk to the taxpayers in town? Because I'm a taxpayer that pays my taxes. They're not delinquent.
And furthermore, I've never met you. How do you know so much about me? Have we ever met?
Public, it's public.
Have we never met? No, we haven't. So who put you up to this?
Nobody put me up to nothing.
Yes, somebody
Nobody puts me up to anything, believe me.
Yes, yes, we know.
Who? So you can keep running at me, but then hit the gavel on me.
We have a motion to adjourn in second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So mean. What's that? He looks so good. Mean.